When either way or only on Zoom?
On Zoom or come in or be in person.
Okay, I mean, I don't know the local, your local open meetings requirements, but they do have the opportunity to come in person.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
We both.
Matt, can you see us by any chance?
No.
Okay.
And I assume the the recording is only going to be of me, is that right? Not of the board?
Nobody else, there's nobody else, there's no public on.
No, no, I know, but since there's no gallery, does that mean the camera that's pointing at the board is not working?
That's right.
Right.
Yeah.
And Jeff is apparently. Okay, thank you all for your patience. I'm calling the meeting to order at seven thirty one. I'm going to. I'm going to skip the chairman's remarks. If I could have a motion to modify the agenda, please, because I'd like to move the food town application up to ahead of all business. Actually. Actually, let's move it up to after the approval of the minutes if we can. Okay.
Motion to move.
Motion second.
And do we? Do we? We don't have chapter one thirty four on the agenda?
No, no, we do.
We do. Oh, okay. I didn't. I didn't see it on. I must have looked at an old one. Okay, very good.
It just says marathon site, but.
Jack, let's just check for the minutes that. Everybody who was able to vote. He's here. If I know, yes, when we. Missed you. To the last two. Yeah, okay, March ninth, yes, and was not here.
No, but can't.
But Matt.
Matt was.
Sue and you, so we can vote on that one.
Okay. At first, I need a vote on the. To change the agenda. Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, okay. And that was made by. By Yaslin and seconded by Sue. Okay, all right, moving on to the approval of the minutes. I had no further comments on March nine, twenty twenty three.
I had no other comments.
No other.
I sent email to you.
Yes.
Okay, so if I could have a motion to approve the minutes of March nine, twenty twenty three, please.
March ninth, yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Sue moves Yaslin second.
Um, yes.
Matt, second, please.
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor? I. Any opposed?
I am in favor, sorry. That satellite delay there.
Thank you. And for March twenty third.
Again, it's. Jack, Sue and Matt.
Okay, so if I can have a motion, please, to approve March twenty third.
So moved.
Matt, second. Okay, thank you. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
I. And any opposed? May. Okay, let's move on. Thank you. And let's move on to the application for the expansion of. Expanding into the former space of Soho Hair Salon. And at the last meeting, we had a presentation. From Noah Katz. Describing. This process in which there will be internal modifications, including the insertion of a beam. In order to support the addition, there will be no changes to the exterior of the building at all. At all. And so entry and egress will remain. With egress at the checkout and entry at the newly added space. At the last meeting, we did not have a short form EAF, but we received that via email. I only had two questions. One was that. The. The EAF chat checked off that the project was in or adjacent to an archaeological site. And I didn't know that it was. Okay, I don't know.
That's something automatically checked off when you go through the DEC's EAF mapper system. Sometimes that data is kind of not all accurate. I don't think there's anything of major significance that we're aware of. It's just something.
Came up, okay. And then there was also the long winged bat, which also came up the same way. Okay, those were the two. Points. On the EAF. That I had questions about, but I I think that even. Because there is no construction going on on the exterior. I think that the likelihood of potential, serious potential environmental impact is not high. And that we can. We can declare this a type two. Action. Needing no further environmental review. And if. That if everyone is in agreement with that, then I will so declare and we vote on it. And I'll sign the EAF, so is.
Jack, if you want to. So you don't want to go through the part two to answer. I mean, if you're saying that it's.
Well, we don't have the, oh, we do have.
Yeah, I do.
Okay, I didn't think we had that. Okay. Dealing with a blank. Okay. And all right, so critical environmental area. The nationalists or.
You see it?
Yes, I do. Okay, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulation? I would say no. Okay. Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land again? I would say no. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? No. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking or walkway? And no. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? I assume that the. Power that that the lighting and the rest is taking advantage of current technology in terms of conservation and the like.
That's my understanding.
Okay. So that would be a no. Will the proposed action impact existing aid, public, private water supplies? No, I think, and public, private wastewater treatment utilities, and I'd say no there too. You're not adding a bathroom.
Um, I don't believe so. I I can confirm. That's a, I don't.
That's a question. I don't. Okay, okay. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources? No. Will the proposed action result in adverse change to natural resources, e.g. wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, aquatic flora and fauna? No. Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for, excuse me, in the potential for erosion, flooding or drainage problems? No. Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? No. Are we all in agreement with that?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
So. Does Matt agree with that as well?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. So I will check the proper boxes and.
On three, right? Seven blocks.
Yeah, and sign. And then I'll sign this tonight, okay?
Jack was there and maybe Matt knows. I know there was a question last week about whether or not a parking table was going to be required. I mean.
Somebody would have to look at the existing approvals that are on file, the whatever's on file with the planning board. I would, or with the building inspector and code enforcement, I would expect that the parking calculation was done for the entire strip mall, not just, not for each space, but that would need to be confirmed, but you could do that as long as you do it before the public hearing.
We did Matt, Jeff and I pulled out a file today that was, it had the site, approved site plan when the post office was taken over. We didn't see any parking table for that file. So. I mean, we'll look into it a little bit more, but we didn't see anything.
Who was the chair at that? Was that Barney Malloy?
I believe so.
Yeah, well, good luck. Yeah, I don't. Yeah, I wasn't involved in that, so I really can't say. It would really, it would be best to go to the original, not so much the original approval, but it was rebuilt in. God, when did we move there? Two thousand, right? No, not two thousand. It seems like it was later than that. When, after it burned, yeah. So I would think, and then they remodeled it, so I'm, I am ninety nine, I I'm not sure because I haven't looked, but I would suspect that it, the parking calculation was done on the whole strip mall, not tenant by tenant. But if it was done tenant by tenant, then you got to, then you got to kind of recalculate the parking, right? But I think you can probably confirm that. I suspect if you pull the file, what they rebuilt, it should be in there from it. That would be Joe Barbero's planning board.
Thank you. So we will, we will check on that.
Okay, if I can just add, for the record, my name is Casey Brenner, the attorney for the applicant in connection with the Food Town Expansion Application. I am also not familiar with the original approvals for the entirety of the site, but we did take a look at the parking requirements in the zoning code and there is a provision in section one thirty eight dash eighteen E of the code regarding the schedule of off-street parking requirements that says any land which is developed and owned as a unit shall be considered a single lot for the purposes of these parking regulations. So we interpret that to to kind of indicate what you all suspect that the entire building here was what was considered for the parking for the site, not each individual use for tenant within. And I, our client confirmed also on the site, actually, it's kind of just all one parking lot. It's not like labeled spaces.
No, they are not identified. No, it's it's open parking.
So so we, we, we think that it would, should be considered the the same way with this application, especially in light of the fact that the demand won't really be increasing with with this internal expansion.
But we will do whatever we can to confirm that, okay, so thank you for that. All right, so we need to send this application to the county.
Right.
For for their approval because you're adjacent to a county road. Okay, so we'll send this to the county planning department. We can do that.
We'll, we'll take care of that.
Yeah, okay, and they usually respond. Fairly quick time. And. I I do have a question. In terms of the insertion of the beam, do you have any idea how that construction is going to be staged because it's, it wasn't, I don't think it had to be done with the post office expansion, and so inserting a steel beam of that length is a.
It did, actually.
It did on the post office side?
Yeah, they were, because that was an extension of the building, so there was a supporting wall. It's pretty, it's pretty straightforward. I mean, and again, it's not, it's not really our, that's really a Greg Warner thing, code enforcement, I mean.
Okay.
But yeah, no, they had to because there's the, they are going through supporting walls, and so they just do this stack of lintel and a steel beam on columns.
Okay. Is the market going to be closed at any time because?
Um, I would need to confirm with with my client on that. Again, no, no, cats is very sorry at the last minute, something came up and he couldn't attend tonight, but we're happy to respond either, you know, in an email or or at the public hearing next month, hopefully, to to all of these questions.
Okay, well, if you will make a note of that, because I think the public will need to be advised if it's, you know, we all depend on it and. So if it is going to be closed, I think the public needs to be advised of that. Okay, and then. Do we wish to set a date for a public hearing? On this, our next scheduled meeting is this Thursday, obviously, we could.
For the twenty seventh, we wouldn't have enough time.
No, no, I understand that. So that is the twenty seventh, the neck, our next after this Thursday.
Yeah, well, this Thursday. You wouldn't be meeting, you would be meeting on the twenty seventh.
That's what I'm saying.
And the next meeting that would be more appropriate for the public hearing in terms of publishing would be the first one in May, which I think is May eleven.
That's what I was, okay, so. And we agree on May eleventh as the date for the public hearing. And if so, we will take care of the announcements and publication of that date. Will you check just to make sure that you all can be here for that, please? And.
So we need, we need a motion for that.
Yes, all right.
So moved.
Thank you, Matt, and second Yaslin, so. Set the date.
And Karen, they're still distributing the posters for, to post at the building, right?
I'm sorry, say again?
They're still distributing, Jeff is still distributing the posters to, for, that the property is under application?
Oh, yes.
Okay, good, good.
We'll do, yeah, we'll, we'll have a. A sign to be picked up that will have to be put in front of the building. But we will be in touch with you about that.
Thanks.
Um. Okay, and then finally, we come to the, and I have actually checked the new zonings to what the, the, whether there's any change in who sets the radius of notification to the public. But. Shall we consider the radius to be the same as the radius for?
Thirty seven?
Yeah, yeah, for thirty seven Chestnut. Which in I, we can go back and look at that diameter, but I think it involved.
There were properties on Marion.
On Marion, on Oak, and I believe.
Yeah, you better hit all of Marion, just because that's the post, you know, the, they're always watching the supermarket.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll make a list, Jack, if you want to check it first, and if you prove it.
All right.
Down with the notice here.
And we will need proof that the. You're familiar with that. All right, well. Anything else that we need to carry out tonight?
So.
No, Jack, and then you'll obviously just communicate with the applicant as to whether or not there is a parking table. I I can't imagine that they would have done anything other than a unit, but you know, things are not always as tight as they should be and don't always follow the code. But either way, I think it's, I think it should be in there, should probably be presumed, but I think even if it weren't, my argument as a member would be there's no, there, there is actually reduced demand to parking. You're not, you're not increasing where people shopping, there's more square footage, but that, there's no reason to believe that it's going to draw more people in at, you know, it can contiguous time. So a separate tenant, which is a separate destination and a separate trip would increase more parking, the salon, right? So I think either way, I think, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
So I think, I don't think, I don't, I would, I would, you know, one vote, obviously, but I would say there's an issue. But it would be good just to let, to, to at least make an attempt to find the initial approvals. If we don't have them, we don't have them. I mean, it's fine.
Okay, all right, we will do that here. Thank you, so. I think that's it for tonight, and I will be in touch with you. Or should I continue to? Contact Mr. Katz, which.
Um, but both would be preferable. I can, I can make sure Karen has my email address and we'll be in touch on the notice requirements and everything and Noah looks forward to returning here on May eleventh.
Thank you very much. Sorry about the wait.
No problem at all. Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, also, I, Noah did confirm the square footages with me. I don't know if that's something you want me to send it an email or just.
If you would send it an email, that would.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nine hundred, what was it you?
Yeah, so I think the existing store is around nine thousand four hundred square feet and the space to be added is around nine hundred and fifty square feet for a total of ten thousand three hundred and sixtyish square feet. Thank you. Have a very good night.
Thank you. Okay. I'm just wondering if we, if we want to move right into the zoning update. And because we've. You know, we're going to run over. So. We, as of today, the, I know there was some confusion about the redlining version that we received, and first we received a redline version that compared the current proposal with the update proposal that was developed in two thousand nineteen but not adopted. Then there was a redline version which compared. Right. But that redline version. Was irrelevant to what we have to do. As of this morning. I wrote to the mayor and to the town, the village attorney that there was no redline version comparing the new proposal against the existing proposal. And that went up this morning or later today that went up.
I'm, I'm sorry, what does that mean? New proposal, existing proposal?
The update versus the current text.
The, the chapter that's in force. The chapter that is in force.
Yes.
Okay.
The original law.
The current, what is currently in code.
Okay.
And there is now a comparison of the update proposal set against the current zoning.
That's, that's on the website?
That just went up on the website, yes.
Okay.
Did anybody, did anybody look at the one? So the one from yesterday, that's what the one from yesterday was supposed to be. It was the two thousand nineteen chapter, right, which is the, that's the adoption of the last changes to the code that's enforced. But what it might, what I had written to the board about is that it's not a red line. It's, I don't know if you guys have used draftable. Does anybody open it?
We can use.
I opened it, but I thought was a comparison between the work group proposal and the existing or whatever code we've had for a long time. I understood that this, the one thirty four was never passed before. It was existing, but it was never approved. Was that correct? So what we're doing is to look at the new work group proposal compared to the not approved one or the.
Or guess what's the current law?
That's right, so that's, but I, when I read it, I did not see the current one, but I saw two versions. I said, how can they be so advanced at that time, already mentioning solar power or something? I was, you know, that's why I was.
Well, this is, this is what I'm saying.
Okay.
Now, if you go to the page with the documents, you will find a redlining that compares the proposal for the update for the section against the existing code, the code that's enforced, as Matt said, okay? And that's what we need to
Look at. Okay.
Okay, now it may. I'm not sure exactly, because that only went up today. I'm not sure when the thirty, whether the thirty day clock starts today. And we need to find that out from, from the town attorney of the village attorney, but the fact is that we are now in possession of a final draft and.
Can we? Let me see if I can find it, actually, this. There's been so much miscommunication on this that and Ted, and Ted think, I don't know if they're responding to you, they're not responding to me. But I said, you cannot ask us to do version control for the working group. That's not what we're doing. This, this board is supposed to look at the code that's in place, right, and what changes you'd like to make for it, right? And until you provide, yeah, so. As I understood it, that draftable document that they sent yesterday, and attorneys use draftable, but that's for like a ten-page contract. This is an eighty-page document that has, that has ballooned to a hundred and thirty pages. So they're showing it as a side-by-side comparison of two pages. The pagination is off almost immediately because of the, because of the difference in length of the documents. So it's not a red line where you, in the, in a single document where you show the changes, it's two documents, right? You'd have to be, I don't know how your mind would work if you could use that document. So let me just, let me just see if I can find, do we know where it should be on the website? We can just look at it here?
We, we got it, we got an email with a link to it, but.
Try and pull it up.
And go to, oh, you're going to pull it up?
I can get into the village.
It's not easy to find.
Yeah, no, I know, I, Jeff sent a link just to the actual document, that was that draftable one.
If you go.
That's right.
You go on the website.
And under boards.
And you go under Board of Trustees. I think this is it where it says chapter one thirty four zoning. And it's got all these.
But the third one should say.
One says redline.
That's right, and that's the one that went up today. At around noon, after I wrote them this morning and said we don't.
I know, I think that's, I think that's the one from yesterday. It says four seventeen.
It may say four seventeen, but it went up today.
If you looked at it, would you know, Jack?
I don't think so. Let me, let me just share it really quick.
It wasn't there when I looked this morning.
Well, let me see really quick. I think that there would have been six documents, one, two, three, four, there's only six documents. This one up last night, this is the one that I said, I don't know how anybody could use this. I don't know how your brain works, but let's take a look at this.
Wait a minute, I, I, I want Karen to open it if she can.
What's that?
Yeah, all right, now, go down. This was not the one that was up.
Boy, you know, if I didn't know better, I would think they don't want our input, but you know, what do I know?
Well, it sure is, it sure is confusing.
So this is a red line.
To me, a red line, I don't know, I don't have the Webster's dictionary, is a single document that shows the ads and additions that you're making. What draftable does is it takes the doc, the old document on the left, the other document on the right, it'll show you deletions on the left, additions on the right, it never overlays them. That's fine if you have a. That's fine if you have a two-page contract and you want to see if somebody's, you know, moving language around. It doesn't work when you have a hundred and thirty pages and the pagination is off.
But look at this, Matt, look at this one. This is not a side-by-side.
Where is this? Are you sharing it?
Yeah, it's, it's up.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, it's shared? Cause I don't see it. It's not shared with the public.
Oh.
What's the document called?
You have to go to the.
It's called comparison with the current code.
And then. One thirty-four, one thirty-four redline proposed compared to current code for seventeen twenty-three. Yeah, this is the, this is the link that Jeff sent last night. So.
The document's different though. Just open it. Let me see.
The document is different.
So what you're supposed to do with this thing, hang on, uh, let me download it. I'll show you how this document works. Okay, can I, uh, share? So I don't know if you guys can use this. I, I don't, I, I, I think I'd have an aneurysm, frankly. I, it, what they do is, again, I, I know, I used to work for law firms. They'll do these kind of comparisons, right? Did? I'm not, I'm not able to share yet. She doesn't have the host.
Let me just get it on.
Okay, here we go. So this is the way shareable work, uh, draftable works. They take the document on the left, right? Which is the document with the red. They show you what was deleted out of the red. Then they show you what was added on the right. But it, at no point do they overlay them as a red line, right? So as you start to go through this, you'll see like, first of all, this, even the first page doesn't line up. It's just one thirty-four, right? So as you go through the pages of this thing.
We're done on the same screen.
Okay, hold on. We should just stop sharing so Matt can share. Matt, can you share the screen?
Oh, it's not sharing?
No, hold on.
No, it says I am sharing, actually. You don't see it?
Hold on.
No, we're closing some of the stuff here so we can see you.
Okay, gotcha. Oh, it does say my screen share is loading though.
Okay, no. It's part of it that we're sharing right now.
So what, what I would do, what I, what my office would do, or what I would tell the attorneys to do is go take your Word document with all the changes from the proposed, right? Accept all the changes, then take the current code in Word and do a Word compare, which will, which will then create a single document that is a red line. This is not a red line. This is a stare and compare left to right as to what was added and what was deleted. And it's almost, for me, it's impossible to follow because, you know, like section, you know, one thirty-four twenty-one, because some, becomes something else, right? Because the and then you get to this, right? Where the pagination then goes completely off, so it, it doesn't line up anyway. So where you're looking for one thirty-four, so one thirty-four thirty-one, notice to stop work. Then you go over here and you see, so notice two was deleted. Then you go have, you have to go down here to one thirty-four thirty-one. Uppercase S was added, uppercase W was added, order, order to remedy. This, this is not a red line. And again, this is fine if you're dealing with a two, three, four, five-page doc, contract. But I don't know how anybody can go through a hundred and thirty pages of this. You can't see it. You can't. Go ahead. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the stuff that's on the right, the blue is what's changed and the, um, the lighter blue that's not highlighted is the change?
Here, it's right, the, it, it tells you it read the top, right? How do I read this, right? Text deleted from the left document and hence not in the right document is highlighted red, red. Text added to the right document and hence not in the left document is highlighted in green.
Okay. And what does the blue mean? The blue text mean?
I think that might just be the font. It's, yeah, no, they, yeah, they're not using font colors, because it's not a red line. They're using highlight. All you have to, all you have to tend to is the highlight. If you see all the section, all the section markers were taken out. Right? So they're not here. But you don't ever see, like I said, you know, first of all, the pagination isn't even, it's not, it's not even a stare and compare because left isn't always left and right, right? And almost immediately, the pagination is off. So if you want to just see what they did to this one, you're going down to this page. And I'm only showing this one because you can kind of see them both at the same time. Notice two space was deleted. Lowercase W or remedy violation was deleted. So what they did was stop work order, order to remedy. Now, what, in a red line, as we all know, we would see that crossed out. We would see the S added, right? You'd see it all here. This is I, I don't know why it was done this way. You know, part of me feels like it's almost like, uh, you know, legal discovery and you don't want me to get through it. I don't know. Hopefully that's not the intention, but this is a hundred and thirty-page document. You who, is there anybody here that works with red lines? Yes, yeah, yes, and you must.
I do.
Yeah, yeah.
Certainly easier, but I feel like we're down the rabbit hole. So.
Well.
You gotta work with what we have. I don't know that we're even gonna be able to get a red line. I mean, um, we can ask, but this is what we're working with.
And look at this, what, yeah, I think you have like a, and then you go over to here, it's like a number eight font.
It's not.
I'm not.
To read.
I, I can't get through this. I don't, I'm not paid enough to even consider going through this. Um, and because it is, it is nonsensical, right? It is a waste of time. All you have to do is accept all the comments in the code update, in the work ad hoc working group committee document, right? So you create a clean Word document. You take the Word file that Jeff has for the chapter one thirty-four. You put them in Word and you do a compare and Word creates a red line. Right? So you see everything at once. There are massive changes in here, massive. We were told that PMU is the big change. That is not the big change. There are massive changes that go across the entire village. And this thing, you know, in the quick, you know, the few stairs I've looked at it. It, it, it not only is not ready for public hearing, it's not ready for prime time. For example, there's a new use called RL, which is a large residential lot. When you look at those lots, there's about twenty lots. No, twenty, yeah. Seven of them aren't even the right size. They don't, they are not RL. Right? You make those kind of mistakes in a zoning document, you're gonna have lawsuits left and right. This stuff has got to be right. It is not yet right. Um, I know that several other people have picked on that and already sent it to the mayor's office, right? That you're talking about forty percent of the RL lots that were just zoned, large residential lots don't meet the requirement for large residential lots. That's one example. There are plenty of others. So this is a very important review. To try to do it with this document makes no sense to me. You know, and it, we all understand what a red line is. What we have been given to date has always been red lines, right? The last red line that we got was, I believe, a red line of, we're the work group, we're the, whatever, this ad hoc working group, right? Where they ended up redlined against where the code update committee and the, and the village boards' changes ended, right? But that's not what we're doing. We're not, this board isn't here to do version control for committees. Right? This board is here to say, you're considering a bunch of zoning changes, a bunch of zone, everything's getting rezoning. R1 isn't even here anymore. Right? You know, so you have to look at this and people, it's going to affect people's property value. You can't get it wrong. Right? People that are planning to do a mixed-use development and getting rezoned RL you know, are going to look to whether or not their rights have been violated. So, look, the village can decide how much risk they want to take, but the document has to be right. It, it is alarming to me that forty percent of the RL lots don't meet the requirement of an RL lot. How do you make that kind of mistake? Right? So this stuff needs to be gone through by people who know what they're looking at. If, you know, I'm happy to help if I'm given a reasonable document. This to me feels like it's, it's burying the information and I don't know why we would want to do that. It's very simple, like I said, to create two clean Word documents, accept all the working groups' changes, create a clean Word document, take the code that Jeff already has for chapter one thirty-four and do a Word compare, right? That'll then create a true red line of the two documents. I don't, I, I don't, I take it you guys haven't looked at this, right? Because I, I've never, I've never used this.
Not this one.
Yeah, this, this is, this is the link that Jeff sent last night. It's the same document, because I have a copy of it that I downloaded yesterday. So, you know, and that's what I was replying to you, Jack, saying, I don't see how we can use this. Like, again, you could get through it if it's ten, fifteen pages, whatever, but it's a hundred and thirty pages.
No, I, I, um, there's, I agree with you.
And we can't be missing things. And this, this, this is all designed intentionally or unintentionally to miss things. You will miss them because, like I said, you know, I mean, if you look right here under article, article one, it stops at E, here it goes to F, right? But you can't quite, you don't, it's not taking the document in its original form and then showing you the changes to it. It's showing you two separate documents. Um, and then doing like, almost what requires like a stare and compare, which frankly, you could probably do better without this highlighting. You'd basically just say, I got nothing. I have to compare to this, to this. To try and compare the red to the green, it's just, I don't. I mean, you guys can look at it. I, I don't know how I could ever do this. And I review contracts all day long. You know, so I, you know, we do between leases and service providers and, and distribution agreements and, you know, so I do see lawyers use this this a little bit, but really just for short contracts. So again, maybe it was with the best of intention. I don't know where draftable came from. Um, maybe it's something that Ted Fink uses.
I don't know.
So this is not a red line. Do we agree that? I mean, it is, it is a comparison of two documents. It's not a red line.
What do you think our options are?
It is, again, I can't say it any simpler. It, it, all you need to do is create a word, a clean Word document. You know, when you track changes in Word, you then go through and say, accept all the changes, right? So if you take the working up, the working committees. Accept all the changes, then you have a, then you have what they believe to be is the modified document, right? As they propose, right? And then you take what Jeff already has, which is chapter one thirty-four, which was last, which was adopted in two thousand nineteen. You open those two in Word and you do a compare and that creates a red line of the two files. It'll take them ten minutes. Um, if they don't want to do that, I'd love to know why.
Can we do it?
Yeah, have we get, have we been given a Word file? Yeah, Jack, look, Jack, you're the chair of the planning board. So say I need a Word file from the code update, from the working group.
That's when I'm happy to do that.
And you need a Word file from Jeff. They used to post the code in Word on the, on the website. They don't do it anymore. It's just PDF. That gets too messy. When you try to do an OCR conversion of a PDF and you're talking about every word matters, that's not great. Um, but if you take two Word, two native Word files and open them in Word and do a Word compare, it'll create a red line. I mean, you guys can take a look at this. I, I, I think you get the sense of what I'm talking about now. Is, is that correct?
Yes. No, and I, I found it very difficult to read. I went through it once.
Yeah, I mean, so, I mean, we all know what a red, a red line is a single document. A red line isn't two documents. So this is, yes, it's a compare of two documents. It's not a red line.
Okay, um, do, uh, we have had a referral to us. Um, and so how do I put this? I don't know whether we can challenge the referral.
What's the referral?
For comments on this and, um, we have, um, there is a public hearing scheduled for it.
The timing of, the timing of that seems to be that they would like to conduct the public hearing. Look, I guess the positive spin could be that you, you're there to get the input of the public, right? And therefore these comments don't matter. I don't agree with that. I think that the public has the right to know while they are there and assembled what the planning board thinks of this. The timing has been set up, frankly, that that can't happen. You would have to ask the mayor and her board why that was done. Right? But what I find hard to believe is a document went from eighty pages to a hundred and thirty pages, right? When this was, what we were told was first introduced to the village board, right? To, to, to discuss the chapter and then set a public hearing. There was absolutely no discussion about a hundred and thirty-page document. They moved straight to setting a hearing. When did the village board discuss this document? What has happened in a public meeting, if anything? Am I understood? I mean.
There, there was no public meeting.
Well, even the village board didn't discuss the chapter.
No, they did not. They simply.
They set a public hearing. When did they discuss the chapter? Where?
Did they give us a schedule? Uh, yes, there is a schedule.
In their proposal, they gave us.
Yeah.
A schedule.
Yes, there is.
And they, they said you have to do this by this.
I think it's the twenty-sixth of April is when they said it.
Yeah, yeah.
Twenty-sixth of April. So.
The day before, the, the day before the planning board even meets again.
That's correct. And so.
And I'm sure that's all by chance, but.
My, uh, you know, my sense of that was that we simply attend the public hearing and treat it as our public hearing. Um, because again.
Did you see how the mayor conducted the discussion, right? When the people asked questions about chapter one thirty-four, Michael Reisman? Right? And Marie Early. Yeah, they were shut down. And they were told they had three minutes, three minutes to discuss a hundred and thirty-page document from two people that could provide valuable information. Why is that?
All right, um, I obviously have a letter to write um, expressing these concerns. Um, I will, uh.
And just, and I don't, you know, I don't, I don't want to be sounding the alarm, but there does need to be an alarm, but more importantly, not more importantly. I, I think that, you know, cooler heads have to say the public needs the input from the standing boards as they're assembled for the public hearing. It doesn't come out after they've assembled and taken public input, because what will often happen as we've seen in our public hearings, you'll have the discussion and then the public has more questions because of that discussion, right? Because it, it raises other issues. It is, it is it, 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 it's not in service to the folks who want to understand this, to not give them the information from the standing boards while they are at the public hearing or in advance of the public hearing. To do it afterwards means you almost have to have another public hearing. They're not going to do that. They're just going to keep it open and control the comment based on writing, right? You would have to submit your comments in writing. So, and then they would actually, I would hope they would at least read those comments in a public meeting, but I am very very skeptical of this entire process. Right? You know, why in the world you'd want to do a complete rezoning? You know, outside of public, of public view. And then while you would schedule a public hearing, that, you know, the village board has no discussion about a chapter that went from eighty pages to a hundred and thirty pages. They move right on to setting a date for the public hearing. You would think the board would need to discuss the chapter. For God's sakes, we saw the code update committee, you know, explaining it to the village board for, what is it, two years?
Yeah.
You know, I mean, this is something, uh, something's rotten in Denmark. But, you know.
All right, um.
Just so you know, the public hearing has been noticed for April twenty-sixth. I think the idea was to keep it open.
Until May something.
The end date you made, but.
Yeah, keep it open, but, but that, obviously Karen, that means you just, you can submit comments in writing after the hearing.
But they should have more hearings from the first one when people have questions and then you will have another hearing or more hearings to to address the public opinion. But if they.
That's not, that's not what's being suggested, but yes.
They don't have another one, then how do we know which one they looked at or they agree or not agree? Or if the public would agree.
Yeah, and let's all, let's all understand too, that this is the document we're looking at that is given to the public, right? To compare the two code versions.
Oh, I know, I know, I know.
And so far, is this comparison thing open to the public?
It is.
It's in, yeah, it's on the. It's in, yeah, it's on the village website, but you know.
Today, starting from today, yes.
This is the one Jeff sent out last night, like around four thirty, five o'clock, something like that.
It was, but it wasn't posted on the.
On the website. Oh, yeah, no, no. He said a link to it. I don't know where it was pulling from. You basically just pulled the file down.
Okay. Yeah, but it didn't, it wasn't posted on the village site until today.
Okay. No, it was, he put a link inside of our email and so it just pulled, it just opened up the PDF from wherever he had it hosted. Yeah. But again, I don't, you know, I don't, you know, I'm very passionate about this stuff and I'm also very passionate about the democratic process. And that's what I'm talking about here. Um, and also that we, you know, that we have a, we have a a role to play here in making sure that we we provide the input that the public needs. And I I don't know why you would want to do that after the public hearing. Now, we can all say, oh, well, the public hearing's still open. Come on, that's not the same thing.
When is our referral expected?
When is our one?
We were asked for a referral. When is that respect, expected to be given that?
It's a few days ago. We have, we have thirty days.
So maybe what we do is like what we did with the PR trail stuff is asked to be put on their agenda and present our referral. It will be during a public meeting?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I I think to your point, Yazil, and and something that the chair of the planning board could do is you could, you could put together comments that you want read to the public at the public hearing as much as you can get together. Right? You know, I mean, when you, I was really shocked to look at the, to look at the RL gaffe. Right? You know, forty percent of the lots don't even meet the RL requirement and they're about to be rezoned. Now, if somebody likes that, it's great. If somebody doesn't like it, then you've got a problem. Right? So I mean, I don't know how many more of those, there's, I don't know how many more of those are in here because it's very difficult to go through. I was, I was really focused on the R because R, R one is gone. There's just a bunch of different Rs. So the planning board could put together, at least they'd have to be pretty high-level concerns. Um, I mean, I I did that when we were supposed to give them our comments on the PMU, but none of them, none of them went to them.
It was my, my.
Yeah, you know, so, because, you know, they said, are we on the right track? And I said, I don't think so. I think that, look, when you, when you buy a, a, a distressed site, right, something that is a brown field, if not, I don't know if they bought it when it was still a toxic, a super fun side or brownfield, but you know, I mean, at least you knew what you bought, right? To the, you know, when the village gets involved in a zoning change that then limits their use and requires them to, you know, fully remediate and then they can't make a profit on the property or don't like that. They're going to have something to say about that. But you know, if you, if you don't touch it, you can say, well, you knew what you bought, right? That's exactly what happened with twenty-one parsonage, right? The the barn that was going to be turned into a residential lot. Um, but since we, since we were able to come up with the correct records, the village was able to defend the code, the zoning specifically. Um, we were sued and we, and we won the lawsuit. Right? And the zoning and the denial was upheld. So I mean, this is big stuff. And I, you know, I can assure you that if you take somebody from, you know, from R three and make them RL and R three, they could do multifamily, they could do, you know, and then you make them RL, but you've botched RL, right? You've got a real problem on your hands with respect to legal exposure of the village. Right? So, you know, look, if you want good people to help and go through it, then give them time to do that, right? If that's what you want.
I think we should stick to our normal existing or standing procedure of our planning board. We, we should say, you know, if we, if you ask the planning board to be involved, then this is our normal procedure. We would want public hearing and we would want to have this according to what we can do as as planning board instead of somebody else telling us this is what you do. I think that's, you know. Talking about now the text in the. No, they're just saying the the procedure, the procedure. Um, you know, at least we should have the public hearing and then know what is going on and then have more public hearing instead of keep it open uh, and then don't know what they said or what they did not say.
You can't, you're not allowed under, under, uh, municipal law to do multiple public hearings. The time clock, the time clock starts when you, you know, when you close the hearing, you can hold it open. But you you there, I don't think there's really anything in the code that allows for multiple public hearings. Because it's a, because it's.
Session, can we ask for a working session?
I'm sorry, what?
Can we ask for a public working session?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I mean, they've, they've already noticed the hearing. You can certainly unnoticed the hearing. It's, there's nothing, there's not, there's no big problem with that, but you know, I mean.
Notice a hearing?
Yeah, absolutely. Just cancel it.
Yeah. Okay.
So, but you know, but once you have the hearing, you you are bound to the clock, right?
Yes.
Um, I I just think, I feel very strongly, as you can tell, is that the public needs as much information as possible. It is in the best interest of the village to share this information. It has not been shared. I don't know why. Right? I don't know why you would want to do all this, you know, undercover of this working committee. Right? Um, it is something that, you know, it it it, I I don't know why. Um, but nevertheless, you then get asked the public to give input. Well, based on what? They've got this document, which will, you know, I don't think, I, the average person probably can't even figure it out, much less, and you know, and the smartest person would have trouble using it. Right? You know, it doesn't sound like you want them to understand it. It doesn't look that way. So, you know, but to have the public hearing and start the clock and then the, the the public wouldn't have the input from the planning board right at the hearing. You know, so there's just all this discussion that comes up that's helpful, right? That you would, well, look, the more eyes you put on a problem, oftentimes the better, better result you get, right? And that doesn't seem to be the focus here. It seems to be that this needs to go through. And that, you know, and the, you know, and the, and the reason or the red herring or whatever it is, is the nicer to money. Well, I don't, I don't, I I don't, that's not smart. Uh, this is, this is, I mean, when you guys get a chance to go through this, it is a sweeping overhaul of the zoning.
No, you're, you're absolutely right. It is. I have gone through it. It's mind-boggling. Um, so this is what I propose is I will draft a letter uh, to the mayor and the trustees, which I will send around in draft. Uh, if any of you would like to send me a bullet point or two to help because my writing schedule is really, uh, at the moment is, 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 is heavy. So, um, but I think this is the way we have to go forward. All right, so I will try and do the sort of uh, structure of this letter tomorrow. And um, because unless we have another special meeting, we're not going to have a chance to discuss it. So so if you all will send your responses to me individually, um, if we could take a vote tonight that I'm authorized to write this letter. Uh, and we will express our deep concerns about the process issues, the clarity issues, everything we've discussed tonight.
During public hearing. During the public hearing on the twenty-sixth. Or that letter just expresses the concern.
No, I will express I'm you'll see what I think we need to do, but.
And it probably ought to be in there too, Jack, is that you made it clear you wanted a liaison to this working group.
I will put.
They agreed that there would be a liaison. We were told, not yet, it's premature. The first communication we then got is we're done.
Yeah. Okay, um, so let me do that.
Okay.
All right, uh, tomorrow sometime. And if you will, though, I would really appreciate if you have any bullet points that you can send. I don't leave it anything out and I want to make it as simple as possible at this point.
These are bullet points on the documents, on the review of the document or just?
You're talking, are you talking about process? Is it process?
Process at this point.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and I will also certainly add into that, um, the creation of a true red line.
It's super simple. I'm happy to help. I mean, Jeff, you know, we just need to get the work groups Word version, their red line version, the track changes. Again, you just click track, accept all changes and then you compare it to Jeff's Word file of chapter one thirty-four from two thousand nineteen. And then that creates a red line. And then you can go through it and know, and know what you're looking at.
All right, Matt.
And that would be a good thing also to give to the public too. I don't know what in the world the public is supposed to do with that document.
I don't know. Uh, if you will send me, it's important, if you can just send me what the requirements are for what we would need in order.
For a Word compare? Yeah, definitely. Yeah, I'll clip it right out of Microsoft's.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
All right, um.
Do that by motion, Jen?
I do want to do it by motion.
So moved.
A second.
All in favor? I.
Okay. Um, all right, um, if it's okay, um, if we can, I don't want to read Joe's letter into the or like the record, right? I'll do it at our next meeting instead of. Yeah, let's table that. Um, and then if we could, there are no members of the public on, so there's no public comment. There's no board business as far as I know, so if we could have um, a resolution to adjourn, please.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Okay. All in paper.
Hi.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Sorry for getting a little hot, but this, this stuff is very important to me.
Absolutely. No apologies necessary.
Very good. All right. Have a good night.
You too.